I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, board members and members of the audience. Thank you for joining us this evening. First item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda and the motion to do so.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have an agenda. Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. This time I will turn over to Ms. Blackburn. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Tonight I will officially present my preliminary recommendations for the budget for 2013-2014. There's really nothing new in the information that I'm going to present this evening because, as you know, budget has become a year-long discussion. We've been talking about our budget outlook and our budget concerns at least monthly for the last six months. Based on the discussions that I've had with the board members over the last two weeks, I believe that you want me to present a needs-based budget to the county. And the information to follow on Slide 2 represents such. The slides are a little bit difficult to read in the audience, but they are also available online. They were posted with the agenda packet for this evening. The slide that you're looking at right now provides details about operating and capital needs that I believe are essential for the school divisions 2013-2014 budget. In response to past discussions about separating capital from operations, I have at least divided the list into two parts so that you can see the major categories of required operating increases and then capital increases that I also consider essential to our school operations for 2013-14. Barring full funding of our request, I would make recommendations for the use of available funds in both areas. In other words, if the supervisors contributed a certain amount of money to offset the gap in our budget, then I would come back to the board and present you with some combination of superintendent's recommendations for reductions to fill the gap both from operations and from capital. So although they're shown separately, I don't consider them actually related. I've spoken about these items in previous meetings, but specifically on the 8th of January, but I want to briefly recap what they are, especially for the benefit of our audience. The first one is federal Title I sequestration, and this amounts to just over $350,000 for Montgomery County, and it would result in a loss of federal funds. And unfortunately, we're not going to know the outcome of that discussion until March at the earliest. If the funds are cut, we have two choices. We either diminish the services to our most needy students, our Title I students and our special ed students included in that, or we cover the lost funds. We may not have a choice because the federal government is sometimes known to take away the money, but not take away the required regulations. So for that reason, I've left this showing as a possibility that Montgomery County Public Schools may have to fill the void of the $350,000. The next item is new AHS and new VHS. The operating cost for those two new buildings will be significantly higher, $224,000. The third item, and I'll speak about this one just a little bit, reinstate $300,000 in previous cuts to instructional supplies. Whenever I speak with principals and with our PTA, PTO presidents and with our teachers, one of the first things I hear is that instructional supplies are becoming scarcer and scarcer. And it's pretty obvious why, because over the last four years, we've removed $1.37 million from instructional supplies and equipment in our schools. And at this point, based on inflation alone, I believe that we need to reinstate or to refund some portion of that money. And I've recommended $300,000 for 2013-2014, which is just a little bit less than 25% of what has been cut over the last four years. The next item is the 4% VRS funding. And no, I skipped one. I skipped the increased health insurance. Let me talk about that just a little bit. We know that our rates are going to go up. We don't know how much, and we probably won't know until the middle or end of this month. And we're estimating approximately $230,000. So I've added that as a potential increase cost for Montgomery County Public Schools. Then moving on to the 4% VRS transfer. I talked about this quite a bit over the last year, especially in light of the fact that our salary schedule appears very non-competitive because 65% of the school divisions in Virginia were able to fund the entire 5% VRS transfer, whereas Montgomery County Public Schools funded only 1% because of our specific economic situation for 2012-13. Again, this also has complicating factor for new hires because each year that we bring in another set of employees, we have another set of payroll guidelines and basically another salary schedule that we're having to implement. So it has tremendous impact on the manpower that you have in HR and the payroll and personnel area. Then I listed the, and the cost of that is $552,000. Then I listed the 2% increase for all employees, which would cost about $1.625 million, of which the portion that the state plans to provide to schools is already included in that 1.625 number. We're receiving well over $450,000, $490,000 from the state, which covers about 700 of our employees, but leaves the remaining employees not covered for a salary increase. Restore two vacant maintenance positions for our new schools. We cut them knowing that it would be a one-year-only proposition, that they're needed to operate the very complex systems in the new schools that will be opening in the fall. And so I've recommended refunding those. As you know, we initially reduced $72,000 from the 2012 budget for pay-to-play income and later reverted that decision, so we would need to refund that money into the budget. And so you see that I've recommended operating increases that amount to $3.45 million. In the capital increases, I stuck to the ones that we've been doing on a regular basis, which include continuing to set aside some funds for our roof maintenance plan, replacing additional funds for 21st Century Classroom project. You'll call, this year's project was Christiansburg High School, and we've invested about $350,000 in upgrading the technology there to bring it to 21st Century standards. And then the third line is replacement of aging buses, again, looking at the potential to replace four buses in 2013-2014. The board will recall that these three items were funded by one-time money only from the Board of Supervisors last year, and they were pulled out of our regular operating cost and indicated as capital cost. And you see, they total $750,000. And so the total budget increases being recommended are $4.2 million of a proposed, result in a proposed operating budget for 2013-14 of just over $96 million. So where's the revenue coming from? Just to talk about it for a minute, we know that the state increase is going to be about $600,000 and $15,000. And in the second line, you see that there's a preliminary federal increase projected of $32,000, $32,000, which is kind of a conundrum considering that we know that there's a very good possibility that they may turn right around and take $350,000 out of Title I and Special Education Funds. So what would it take to make up the gap between the known increase in revenue and the total required revenue? It would take just over $3.5 million. And to provide a frame of reference for that, if that money were coming specifically only from county funds, real estate tax, at $700,000 per penny, that would require about a 5.1 cent increase to fund $3.55 additional million for Montgomery County Schools. So in the past, we've pretty much done the conversation about the needs-based budget, and then we've later done the conversation about what are we going to reduce if we don't get the gap money either from state funds or from the county. And this year, I've decided to take a little bit of a different tact because we end up at the end of the line, you know, creating all the cuts. And sometimes people say, you know, they're surprised that they didn't know that this is what we were going to be doing because we've been talking about what we felt we needed to operate the school system as opposed to what we might do if we didn't get the money. So what you have in front of you is my first stab at providing you what I would consider recommendations if the gap were not filled. And you'll see that I have in front of you there about $3.5 million worth of potential recommendations. The ones that I looked at, there's some potential for doing some reconfiguration on my leadership team that would result in about $53,000 savings. There's the summer academy change. It was one of our budget studies that we did this year. Basically, we remove the personnel from the program, places some responsibility on the summer administration of the school, and would result in a savings of about $38,000. I'm also going to make some additional recommendations about changes in the sick leave bank. You can't put a price tag on them though because it depends purely on use. And what I'm considering at this point is possibly reducing the number of days that you can take at any one time. The fourth one is reduce extended-year contracts. And I provided the board with some fairly extensive information about that. We have a number of employees across the district, both career and technical employees, media specialists, school nurses, some other folks who either work on an extended-year contract or who work some days when students are not in session and that might be able to be reduced. And so I've determined about $109,000 worth of those extended-year contracts that I would recommend for consideration for reduction. It is a departure in some sense from the kind of stance that the board has usually taken because it would ultimately reduce in a reduction in the take-home pay of some of our employees. The board has already instituted a close review of the supplemented positions, but only as they become vacant, not the ones that are currently held. So you received a detailed listing of the ones that I would recommend. Basically, it's a tiered approach. It reduces them some in the first year, 2013-14, and then gives us an opportunity to observe whether we're creating a major impact on program through the reduction of those days. The next one on there is freeze current rate on health insurance and offer a tiered plan for employees. And again, remember, this is only if I have a gap to fill. These are not things I necessarily want to do. This is if we don't get $3.5 million either from the Board of Supervisors or from an increase in state revenue. What I'm recommending that the board take a look at is that we no longer increase the board contribution for the single-pay, single-subscriber plan for employees, but rather that we direct our provider to provide a plan that we could pay 100% of at the current rate and then offer an enriched plan that an employee could pay additional out-of-pocket funds to have that plan if it were the desire of the employee. The net result is that there would be no increase to the board in health insurance premiums, but there would, for the first time, be the potential that a large number of our employees might opt to pay some portion of their premium themselves. The next one is reduce two FTE assistant principals at middle schools. There are two assistant principals at each of the two large middle schools, and I would recommend that that be one of the things we look at as a reduction, not because I don't think they're needed, not because they don't do a great job, but because if I'm going to come up with some of these, some of the gap money, I have to look very closely at what kind of things are out there for us to potentially consider. Eliminate middle school athletics and replace with intermunal program. The board's had extensive discussion over that before and chose not to do it, but if we're looking at a potential $3.5 million gap, $3.5 million gap, I felt that it was merited at least a conversation again. The next two are the large ones, and I would draw your attention to those because if you've spent five years cutting budgets, you're down to the big stuff. You've already cut all the low-hanging fruit. You've already cut the things that are nice to have, but not mandatory. And you're down to the point that you're looking at the real meat and potatoes of the business that we conduct. And from that perspective, I suggest that we look at an increase in class size across the board of one-half student, which would be about 20 positions and result in a cost savings of $1.25 million. We have made some cuts over the past years, but the net increase in our class size has only been about 0.5 on average class size. And we all know that there are pockets where you're going to have a classroom that exceeds significantly the average. You're going to have other places where the class size is significantly below the average. Number nine, line number nine is a relatively new one, although the board has received some extensive information, and I have talked about it at a board meeting, and that is to modify, in this particular recommendation, our middle school class schedule. It was one of the studies. The study was to look at potential cost savings for modifying all of our secondary schedules. And in year one, there were a significant gap in revenue. I would recommend that we look first at the middle school for 2013-14 and then potentially look at the high school as a planning year during 2013-14 for implementation in 2014-15. And then even at that, I still wasn't at the magic number, so we needed to identify eight additional staffing reductions within the school system at a value of $60,400 per unit, and those would come from all kinds of places: administration, support services, district staff, schedule changes, additional increases in PTR, or possibly even reducing programs. I thought it would be a good time to take a look at the budget study updates that we've done. My staff and I spent a lot of time this year trying to evaluate creative ways of saving money. And again, I would reiterate that I think we're at the point, having come off five years of loss of funds, that we're going to have to look at doing business in some different ways. And these are pretty much complete. There are just two or three that remain with due dates at the end of the month. One that stretched out to another year, which is the shared services because we've just moved into this building with the Board of Supervisors and have not had time to do that full analysis. And I'll be meeting with Mr. Meadows again next week to continue that discussion. The status of them is marked and highlighted for the ones that are finished, and a number of them were incorporated in the list of places that I would go to in making preliminary recommendations for reductions to the board. So there's also what I think is some great information that has been posted on the division's website for much of the fall as we've looked at our budget. And I think it's important to recap a little bit of it. Our budget this year is $5.5 million less than it was in 2008-2009. And we already know that this year's known additional revenue is only just over $600,000, and it carries with it a $490,000 required expenditure. So you can see that the governor's budget gives us very little new discretionary money. So what have we done over the last five years since 2008? There it is. We've touched virtually every facet of the organization to a total, grand total, of $9.5 million in reductions over the last five years. We've had some things that we had to pay more for, some of them by our choice, but many of them by, you know, coincidence in the case of the VHS and BMS temporary housing and a case of state mandates and things like the VRS contribution rate increase. It cost us almost $1.6 million last year. So why do we need more money for 2013-2014? There's the list. Same things that I just talked about, the pay-to-play, the vacant maintenance, the imperative to continue to put 21st century technology in our classrooms, AHS, VHS, operating costs, and I won't read you the rest of the list, but comes up to just over $4 million in that list. And then finally, you have the budget calendar. And we're essentially on a countdown from January 14th, which is about not quite halfway down that page where it says, "A special budget meeting for superintendent and superintendent's proposed budget request and discussion by the board this evening for some direction regarding that." Your board packet also includes, included some information from last year's discussion and the cuts that we made and the ones we talked about and ended up not making. But they're all listed for you, and I didn't duplicate them on the PowerPoint this evening, but you have a copy. So some other things tonight that I have available and some things that I need that I'd like to recap before I turn this back over to Mr. Jones is I have Mr. Simkins here this evening prepared to answer questions or make a full presentation on a modified secondary school schedule, and I'm prepared to answer any other questions that you may have. To make our time meaningful on the 22nd, so that I can bring you a budget that you can advertise, that you can approve and advertise for public hearing, there's several things that I need from the board tonight. I need to know if there are additions or deletions from the needs-based budget that you would make. In other words, that $4.2 million that resulted in a $3.5 million gap, is there something that should be on that list that I didn't put on that list? Or is there something on that list that you would say right up front that you would not want to fund? Number two, I need an input on the priority recommendations that I've made, should reductions be necessary. Some direction on information that you want about the secondary schedule change option and the class size increase, or for you to just tell me these are things that we would not use to fill the gap, even if the gap were as big as $3.5 million. And then finally, other recommendations that you would have, that you would support, either in lieu of or in addition to the ones that I've suggested, should there be a budget gap for 2013-2014. I think that pretty much finishes up the pending remarks that I had for this evening. Certainly, I'm available to answer questions about any of the information that I shared.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. I guess the first question, the board members, and you offered Mr. Simkins to present to us. Are you interested?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Simkins, you're on.
Mr. Simkins, would you mind doing just a quick test in that mic to make sure it's working while I continue the presentation?
Testing. It's working.
Good evening, members of the boards, members of the audience. It's my pleasure to share with you information concerning our secondary school scheduling study that we've completed during the fall and early winter of this year. The study of secondary school scheduling followed the examination of various scheduling models and how each influenced secondary education in our division. The research was coordinated with school principals, curriculum supervisors, and input from teachers within schools. The goal of the study was to determine if the change in school schedules while maintaining current academic standards would result in personnel efficiencies or cost savings. The study helps us understand the influence different scheduling models have on the overall school division budget and meeting the academic accountability standards as defined by the Virginia Standards of Quality and Accreditation. We've talked frivolously about 89% of our school budget being related to personnel costs. Three ways of decreasing personnel costs are to reduce the number of personnel, reduce salaries or benefits, or increase efficiency. The school schedule governs the need for an assignment of student-load positions, which are employees with direct teaching responsibilities. While efficiencies may be a misnomer, what it means in this context is the percentage of the day that teachers actually have students in class. To increase the efficiency of the school schedule, one must either increase class size or maximize the use of instructional personnel during the school day. Both actions decrease the need for student-load-bearing positions. The standards of accreditation establish parameters for the percentage of instructional day. Teachers may be assigned student-load positions as well as the number of students they may teach per day. Chart illustrates 83% of the day with student-load positions whose teachers may be assigned, and they may be assigned up to 120 to 150 students per day. This chart illustrates current MCPS teaching loads. The percentage of the instructional day teachers are assigned to student-load positions in state regulations. As you look across the chart, you'll notice that the current MCPS day, and this again, this is for secondary, averages seven or eight periods per day. Five of the seven or eight periods are teaching-load periods, and on the 44 block, three out of four. State regulation in essence allows up to five out of six periods or the equivalent. And you can see in the second line, the percentage of the instructional day under the current model ranges from 62.5% to 71.4% on the block schedule, approximately 75%. And again, the state allows you up to 83.13%. This chart illustrates the state minimum instructional day, sampling of the MCPS instructional day, and the MCPS intracial day. And again, you'll notice that the state minimum day, and we talk about that a great deal when we look at the board's budget. and we talk about that a great deal when we look at banking time within schools, but that minimum is 5.5 hours as you come across the bar graph. The instructional day varies by school at secondary level. Some of those range from approximately 5 hours 55 minutes on up to 6 hours and approximately 20 minutes. And our instructional contractual day is 7.5 hours. That's minus 30 minutes of lunch for that. So the more efficient use of time within the instructional day, the greater the potential savings for personnel costs. And the instructional day is the middle bar graph that's on the screen. Increasing instructional time for students during the overall school day by reducing non-instructional time, such as unorganized segments of the student day, such as transitions, lunches, breaks, time before and after school, were noted as advantages of having teachers teaching 5-6 of the instructional day. And I don't mean eliminating lunch, I mean examining the amount of lunch time that we have at different schools on different schedules. That ranges from approximately 22 minutes to 45 minutes as far as lunch periods. Non-student load time again means teachers do not have teaching responsibilities. Another way to think of efficiencies is in terms of the amount of planning time and non-teaching duty assignments that teachers receive during student attendance hours. The less non-teaching duty assignments and/or planning times such as team or departmental, the more efficient use of instructional personnel. Would be instructionally more efficient for team or departmental planning to occur outside of the instructional day is illustrated by an earlier slide which compared the contractual day to the instructional day. As I said earlier, secondary schools currently have multiple scheduling models. And that's grades 6, 8, and that's grades 9, 12. The goal illustrated in this example is to examine each school's current classes or the core classes, which are English, Science, Math, and Social Studies, scheduling model, and utilize 5-6 of the instructional day for assigning teacher load positions and determine if there are net gains of teaching periods. Now, would you, to do this, you actually would need a master teaching schedule in front of you with all the periods and all the teacher assignments that are done during the school day. This slide provides an example taken from an activity we conducted with our principals as they analyzed the master teaching schedule to determine potential savings. So in essence, each additional period that you can find during the instructional day, you total those together, and then you look and see the number of periods that you have from those, and you basically determine the potential FTE savings from those net gains in periods. The remainder of the principal scheduling activity allowed our principals to look and to construct a master teaching schedule factor and reduce FTEs and following the noted constraints. In other words, you could build your master schedule, but you had to keep your PTR at the current level. And your core classes that you had, staff would be required to teach in their subject areas, and all teaching staff would be required to teach in their six periods and/or three blocks. When we compare our basic scheduling models to one in which teachers instruct more and have less non-teaching duty assignments and/or team or departmental planning time, efficiency was increased and potential savings ranged from, as Ms. Blackburn shared earlier, approximately 1.2 million dollars within our middle school schedules. Could you? Go back.
One slide.
One more?
Go back one.
We'll test this for you all tomorrow. Sorry, can you get tested? We didn't know if you were gonna look at it or not.
Right. And it was exercise we were doing, which was simply after we examined our master teaching schedule, after we looked at the instructional day, after we determined basically a 5-6 teaching assignment, and we found our periods, we took those number of periods, those number of periods were then calculated, basically looking at standard six-period teaching day from that standard six-period teaching day. That's how we came up with the number of periods and the number of duties.
And it looks like from the paper that you prepared that there's a potential of savings up to 1.4 million if you went to a block kind of schedule with middle school?
That's correct. And the difference, the difference anytime you go to a block schedule is usually additional savings within textbooks because you need usually about 50% of the textbooks whenever you look at that type of schedule. Again, we were trying to stay away from a specific instructional schedule, but again, look at efficiency of the current schedules that were in place. And again, as Ms. Blackburn stated to you earlier, from the standpoint of a potential implementation plan, we would look at implementing a plan if you chose to go in this direction of implementing the middle school savings during school year 13, 14, and try to evaluate that plan in the summer of 2014, while at the same time be planning for new secondary models at the high school level during the 2013, 14 school year, with possible implementation during the 2014, 15 school year with evaluation of the models in the summer of 2015.
Could the middle school possibly do the block if that's something that they want to do?
The answer to that would be yes. As a matter of fact, currently, we have different variations of schedules in our middle schools. We probably have much more blocking going on currently at Christiansburg Middle School than we do in any of our other middle schools, even though we have used blocking some at Shawville Middle School. Again, as I said earlier, again, the purpose of the study was to look at efficiencies, regardless of what scheduling model that a school administration and/or team may look at implementing. The goal would be to make sure that you maximize the 5-6 efficiency whenever you look at your instructional staff and you look at your instructional day.
May I just interject one thing? One of the things, one of the reasons that we looked at both the six of seven schedule and a block instead of only looking at one, because the block is the most efficient, is because there's a difference in how you run your classroom on a block schedule because you've got the 90-minute instructional time. And that's something that, you know, sometimes takes some professional development time to get ready to organize your instruction in that way. So we were looking at how can you make either approach a little more cost-effective?
I was just gonna say, I understand that Blacksburg High School is looking at doing a block-type schedule already, planning it, so they could potentially implement, I would assume, this coming fall. And it seems like that would be a good timing, going into a new building, and just wondered about, I mean, I'm not sure about Auburn-type schools, but could that be a good time to transition when you're going into a new building for that kind of thing?
Ah, sir.
Blacksburg High School basically started out this year looking at what, how are the most effective high schools in the nation scheduled? And so they've been doing a study all year long. It would be difficult to walk into a high school, let's say, February the 8th, and say, "We want you to move from a traditional 50-minute period to a 90-minute block and be ready to do that by the opening of school in the fall." It would be challenging. And to my knowledge, Auburn has not been looking at that. Maybe they may have been.
Auburn has not done a programmatic study of the nature that Blacksburg High School is currently engaged in. What we have done at Auburn High School for the last three years, I believe, we actually looked at a dual enrollment College Zone program, and we have provided opportunities for those students at Auburn who would like to participate in the dual enrollment program by assigning other staff within the division. And to be able to do that, we've had to align that staff basically with a block schedule. So we have set a block schedule and over top of their current seven-period day, which allows students to move in and out of a seven-period day as well as a 404 block day. So that would be the extent, but from a standpoint of looking at an entire staff and going through what we would consider to be appropriate training for those teachers to be prepared to go to a 404 model. We have not done that at this time.
We've, the implementation of this plan, are we looking at this for strictly financial efficiency? And have we done any investigation as to the superior educational effectiveness, Ms. Mann?
The complete study that you had took many of the surrounding school divisions and showed you exactly how their schedules were planned out. And actually, the only school system other than Montgomery County that used 5 of 7 with teachers routinely having two planning periods was Salem. Barring that one specific school, every other surrounding school division had teachers spending a greater amount of time in the classroom. So if you look at Montgomery County comparative in terms of student achievement, the student achievement levels are comparable to schools that are using teachers for a greater amount of time. So the change in the scheduling model does not appear to have a negative impact on student achievement.
And you spoke about planning time for teachers. How does it affect that?
Currently, in most of your middle schools, teachers are teaching 5 of 7 if they're on a seven-period day. And they have two planning periods of whatever length the period is there. It varies from, what, 40 minutes up to?
Probably 42 minutes to, again, depending on whether they're on a block or not, it could go as high as 80 to 88 minutes.
And of that planning time, they are required to meet sometimes as a team planning, and then they're given some duties like hall duty and lunch duty and those kind of things on some of the other days. So not all of the two planning periods are dedicated to planning.
And other than that, what about, you said 5 of 7, who was that? That was block?
No, 5 of 7 would be your traditional schedule.
And what about the block?
And the block schools, they're all teaching, if they were straight block, they would be teaching three of four blocks, meaning they had 90 minutes in a day that they were doing planning.
And the same goes for them. They plan as a team, and also they have responsibilities like cafeteria bus and so on?
Again, if you're speaking strictly of the middle schools, the answer would be that would vary from school to school based upon the scheduling model they were on. If you're speaking of the high school blocks, which are, again, at East Montgomery High School and Christiansburg High School, they only have individually. They do not obviously have any team planning within that 90 minutes. And those teachers do not do other duties within those 90 minutes. It's planning time only during that period of time.
Okay. With this model, what would be the difference?
The difference in this model here would be there would be less team planning time during the instructional day. That doesn't necessarily, as one of the slides pointed out, that doesn't necessarily take away team planning because you have to look outside of the instructional day. You need to examine the contractual day. In other words, the time that, the seven hours that we actually have students, teachers, you know, on campus minus the 30 minutes that they have for lunch, which is the seven and a half hour days. So some of the school divisions that we surveyed in surrounding counties, some of those use that planning time out of the instructional day but within the contractual day, you sort of could do that.
The change definitely uses teacher time in a different way. It prioritizes teacher time in front of students. And it minimizes teacher time for activities other than regular planning and instructing students.
So if we have teachers now who are coming in early, leaving late, outside of the contractual day, and now we're saying, you know, and I agree, it's maximizing instructional, instructional time, but I'm concerned that somehow or another, the teachers are gonna be pushed to plan, and that's gonna fall apart. That's what it kind of sounds like to me. Because they're gonna be trying to do everything else they need to do to prepare for classes, and then the planning time will just kind of disappear, especially the team plan.
I can give you a specific, again, this was a secondary scheduling study for grades 6 to 12. I can give you a personal experience from a standpoint of implementing the block schedule many years ago. What it required us to do is really reexamine our priorities and reexamine what our focus was and what our core mission was from the standpoint of the instructional programs. So we really had to start putting, basically, a rating on what we valued and what it was we wanted to try to accomplish. And a lot of the things that we previously were doing a certain way when we changed, such as duties, eliminating some of those, we were able to certainly afford teachers more time, not only being in front of students, but also more planning time within the day.
Well, if you're eliminating those duties from a teacher, then who's doing those duties?
When I was talking, when I was talking about, again, the example I gave you basically in the high school, part of those duties were examples that I put up on the screen for you. In other words, at the high school level, many times, it was a non-teaching duty. It basically was assigning someone to assist other people within the building, you know, such as an assistant athletic director, such as a hall duty. Some of those, again, when we looked at the way we were scheduling, we found that we didn't, we didn't need those anymore. And basically, we became more efficient in the way that we were doing those activities.
We're actually paying teachers right now the same thing to do hall supervision and to do cafeteria duty that we pay them to teach students. And we looked at the potential of saving about nine instructional units, I believe, very easily. And nine instructional units is $540,000. So if you double that, that puts you at the 1.2 million dollar savings. If you needed additional supervision, you could probably cover that with a lot lower-priced employee and get the same kind of results. For example, we've just done a situation at BMS in which we hired some campus monitors to assist, and we certainly don't pay them $60,400. And yet, they are another set of eyes and ears. And so I've worked in both. I've worked in a, in a school system that was 5 of 7. I've worked in the same school system that moved to 6 of 7, and then back to 5 of 7, and now back to 6 of 7 again. It's how you want to use your instructional resources. And how much planning time is enough planning time? And can you maximize the use of non-instructional time before and after the school day without giving teachers duty assignments? And those kinds of things, or less duty assignments? And those kinds of things are less duty assignments in many cases. It's not just about money. It's also about, you know, using teachers for what they do best, which is, you know, teaching students.
I'm trying to understand. This is under possible budget reduction options, correct?
I have placed it as one of my recommendations under possible budget reductions.
Well, it sounds to me like you're trying to sell it. And, and go ahead.
Well, if I recommended it, I'm already sold. So I'm just basically trying to, you know, give the board some information about it. Because if we were to face a three-point-five-million-dollar void, there's no more little things that we can do.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this question. If you did not have that four-point-two-million-dollar void, where would this be?
It could be a decision that you made regardless of whether you had this budget cut or not. You might want to use those resources to restore something that you've already cut from the budget.
No, I don't want to talk about cuts at all.
No, I said to restore.
I want to talk about the fact that everything is fine. We don't need to cut anything. Where does this particular problems plan stand? Would you push, would you still continue it? Or would you say, we'll keep it the way it is?
Quite frankly, I would recommend it and restore some things that you've cut from the budget that I would prioritize as being more important.
That does seem like something that we should talk about now and understand the details because if the middle schools want to roll this out, then we would want them to be able to act on it before, if you look at our budget timeline, we possibly would hear back about more budget numbers. So to me, it seems like it's a discussion that needs to happen within the next couple of meetings so that people can know. And I'd like to understand more. If the school board has discussion and some kind of vote on this, what does this mean for the middle schools? They can decide on their own kind of what model they'd like to do, but they need to buy in savings, this much savings, or what does that mean?
My direction would be, what I'm trying to cultivate is that the board create a couple of scheduling options that you, you know, unilaterally support. A block schedule of a certain type and a six-of-seven schedule of some type, and that a school would have the option to choose. But right now, you don't really have any parameters around what a school has. You have the parameter that you have to meet the state standard for instructional minutes. So you've got schools where people have forty-five-minute lunches. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't think we need a forty-five-minute lunch in any single school in our district. And, you know, so what I'm saying is, if we need to do business in some different ways so that we can also do some other things that we want to do, this is a place to look at it where there are some efficiencies that don't take away in general from program and that don't in general take away from instructional quality.
What about, would it be fair to ask if the Teachers Association has looked at this and what is their response to it?
We have not engaged the MCEA to this point because it has not even been vetted with the board.
The people that were on Mr. Simpkins' committee that worked on this, they included, I assume, principals and staff at the middle school level?
Yes, we work with, we work with all the principals. Mr. Willard of Blacksburg Middle School involved some of his staff when he was looking at the study there.
Willard?
Yes, I'm sorry, and I made that, instructional supervisors, yes.
Teachers as well?
Yes, Mr. Willard involved teachers of Blacksburg Middle School.
So the...
We were not asking the question, do you want to do this? We were asking the question, how can this be done effectively in a school? So we haven't asked for, you know, do you want to do this?
I have a question that's off the subject just a little bit. You were mentioning, and I hear you, when you said it would be hard to implement block scheduling in the two schools of high schools that didn't have block scheduling. I mean, to your question, for me, I would like to see a more unified schedule throughout the county block-wise anyway. I've tried to talk about that for years in different ways, but, you know, each school seemed to have their own interest in which direction they wanted to go. But at what kind of timeline would you be looking for in order to implement if they were to choose to do so?
In terms of the middle school model, I think we could implement the middle school model by the fall of two thousand and thirteen. For your high schools, especially a large comprehensive high school, I think you need a year's planning time to get ready. So I looked at the potential of implementing middle schools in the fall of thirteen, fourteen, with high schools then having a planning year, thirteen, fourteen, during which they could decide whether block or six-of-seven best met their needs and implement one of the two beginning in the fall of two thousand and fourteen. So they need a year's planning time in the high school.
I think there's also more positive things that come out of a block scheduling, you know, that the students like as well.
So just so I'm clear, when you did your study, you only talked to Blacksburg Middle School or who?
Mr. Simpkins did the study. He only talked to teachers at Blacksburg Middle School. That's because John Wheeler was one of the ones doing some of the statistical research. We've not gone out and vetted this with teachers, Ms. Franklin. I don't want to represent that.
Not me, the other administrators.
Oh, all the other middle schools.
Yes, yes. All the middle school administrators as well as curriculum supervisors had an opportunity to review this discussion.
As part of your possible budget reduction spreadsheet where you have the column of FTEs and RAD, would that not, next to the modified middle school class schedule, would that not have a number there too?
It could have. That's, that's the number in the big chart that was in the whole study. It showed you the number that would be reduced, positions that would be reduced.
Is that twenty?
Yeah, it's about twenty. Like nineteen-point-three-nine core FTEs.
Do you have the whole study, the one, the page that showed the number of positions that would be reduced in the middle school? Yes. How many was it?
There was nineteen-point-three-nine in core and zero-point-three-three in the non-core areas. And the reason that the number's lower in the non-core areas is most of the non-core teachers are already teaching six classes.
And remember, that does not include an increase in class size. The reason you're reducing positions is because teachers are teaching more class periods in a day. So you're spreading the student load across the additional class period.
So in your possible budget reduction, line nine is purely personnel and benefits, the one-point-one-nine-one number?
My line nine, modified middle school class schedule, one-point-one-nine, I chose the lower number because I didn't want to say that you had to do a block. You can save more money with the block because you also save on textbook money. So this number is purely staff positions.
Purely staff.
And if you went to block, you would add additional dollars to this.
Are we ready to move on to other areas?
Yeah, I was going to say, any additional questions on Mr. Dicker? Mr. Simpkins, thank you very much for your time and presentation. Hope for the ahead and the information tomorrow.
I just wonder about this particular item. Maybe later in the meeting we're going to talk about it. But if others are interested, taking this as a separate item to a future meeting in the month of January, beginning of February, and receiving some feedback more from staff and looking at moving forward or not moving forward with this so that they know the future of this instead of waiting until April timeframe where this could be part of budget reductions, but instead out of that area. I don't know if I'm explaining myself right, but...
Yeah, I agree with that. Is that a possibility?
Yes, I mean, we can do some additional work and bring you a full report as early as January twenty-second, and it's ready.
So let me make sure I understand. You're asking this board to potentially approve a line item I had of the entire budget?
No, I'm asking that we get a full report on it so we can take a closer look at it.
I was thinking of taking, not treating this as a line item, instead as something that could potentially save some money that could be used for replacing, you know, things that we've already cut. But also hearing in the next meeting or so, feedback from, more detail from the staffs of the schools that would want to possibly be doing this, the pluses and minuses and how we move forward with this, instead of looking at as a possible budget reduction option. That knows they would want to know one way or another on this so that they can move forward on scheduling their schools if that happens in the springtime burn.
So I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is, is there interest in doing this regardless of whether it has a impact as a budget reduction or not? But to go ahead and present information that the board could then decide that you want to establish these scheduling models that schools may choose from, either a six-of-seven or a block or some modified block within a six-of-seven framework. I, I can bring you the information. I don't know if the board wants that. That's your discussion.
To be able to make this decision, I would want to hear from you as much as I can.
Ms. Franklin, could you pull your microphone closer, please? Thank you very much. Yeah, I agree with that. I think that as much information as we can get on it.
So we'll talk about it on the agenda and edit it as a separate agenda item. That's what I'm hearing. We'll look at the next agenda as an item, as a separate item. Other items on this, we're on the budget reduction option list, is that right, board members, that the list you're looking at?
Summer Academy, changes there. Are you saying we would go to a virtual academy alone?
Nelson, that's your item again. There's a synopsis here. And there was a fact sheet on the study. It showed, why don't you speak to it?
We would not, no, the virtual, basically, would increase part of the virtual enrollment to the school. The other part of the saving was to locate the summer school options by asking students, and use their own systems. But it would not be a fully virtual model. We would have teachers that are at the school totally from these virtual, maximize or minimize instructional costs.
Which item was it? What number item was that?
That's item two. So my concern is that the children who we would have at the summer academies are usually the ones who need more instruction. And that they go in virtual, we're not going to put any hardship on the student to try to be successful.
We have worked extremely hard, our project aim...
That microphone is set up. Okay, thank you. It's largely Plato-based, using our existing Plato-based program.
Yes, critical. I'm sure it is so. A lot of our modeling, our project game class uses the Plato, uses the virtual model with tapes there. Again, we have minimized the number of students that's been required to use.
Probably need my granddaughter to do it.
Project Ane has afforded us the opportunity to work with a lot of our students during the school year as far as credit recovery, which has minimized the number of students that now attend our summer school programs. We would use elements of that program at each of our, at each of our high schools. So we also would have teachers very similar to what we do in our project game program at each of the high schools now. So a student wouldn't be there working on a virtual model with no assistance. We would have help at schools to assist those students and work with them. They would have subject area specialties at school that could provide assistance for the instructional program.
Okay, thank you. The other item that I have some concern is the, or question, is the healthcare and the cheer plan? So this would mean whatever, basically, whatever increases that are put out there for this year, we would stay with what we're paying this year. And our employees would pay for any increases this year and years to follow. That would be it.
Not exactly. You know, what we've been doing to the healthcare plan every year since I've been here is we've been reducing the benefits. And we've been, as a board, taking whatever the increased cost was, but also reducing benefits to offset how much the premium to the board went up. So what I would propose is that the board say for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, the board will contribute X dollars to an individual, single subscriber health plan. My job then would be to work with our provider, our insurance provider, to create a plan that is fully paid at that level. So instead of every employee in the district getting a fully paid, lower benefit plan, all employees would have that available to them. But then there would be a second plan that an employee would have to contribute to that would have higher benefits. So in other words, if I want the plan that doesn't cost me anything, it's there and it's available. It has slightly lower benefits. If I want to pay to add to what the board provides, then there's a plan that I can have, probably would have lower deductibles and co-pays and that kind of thing, but I would contribute to it as an employee. You already have two different plans, and the board pays a different amount of money depending on which plan an employee picks. This is just a little bit different in that instead of just being a plan that the board paid a hundred percent, an employee would have another option if they wanted to contribute to buy a, a plan that would result in lower out-of-pocket expenses.
Okay. So I hear you would say we would make a set contribution, right? Would we be looking at our contribution being less than what we're doing now? Or at an increase to cover at least to keep our plan where it's at now?
No increase. Whatever the plan looks like, at the cost the board currently contributes would be what the plan would look like. Otherwise, you don't save any money.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So again, we're going to be paying what we're paying now or what we have now. If there's any increase to the plan, but the... Okay. If, if there's no changes to the plan, then we're going to cover it as it is. And, but then there's going to be another plan we're going to offer to the employees above and beyond. But it's not going to be at the, for the sake of cutting the plan that we have now.
That's not what this means. This means if, if the plan cost goes up, which we expect it to be, that it would cost the board two-hundred-and-thirty thousand additional dollars to provide what you currently provide for employees. And I'm saying, if we have to pack the budget and we have to do business in a different way, then one of my recommendations would be... way, then one of my recommendations would be that we no longer do that.
So, we would not pay the additional 100,000 dollars?
No, but we would say to our provider, you have to give us a plan that's fully paid that costs the same as now. See, what you're doing right now is every employee gets less benefits. You know, it's half a dozen of one, half a dozen of other. I mean, if you look at your cards over the last three years, anybody who has a health insurance, you know, the co-pays go from 25 to 50 to 75, or 25, 50, 35. The deductibles go from 100, 200, 300, looking right at your card, at what's happened each year with the policy plan. So, I guess what I'm saying is that you use the money that you currently contribute to create with our provider, a plan that is fully paid by this board at the current rate you pay. And then employees who want to contribute can buy a higher option plan by investing out-of-pocket money.
So, with what we contribute now, we would have a lesser plan than what we have now, and that's what we would offer our employees.
Fully pay. But it's either going to be a higher copay or higher something, deductible or something, because if we're going to save 230,000, something has to go up. How many different types are we offering now? Two?
There are two plans. One of them is a little bit more costly per year than the other one. Walt can probably tell you the premium difference. I don't know.
Well, the question is, in this model, you're only going to offer two. So, from a payroll perspective, there's no change, because I was worried about time in the payroll office for doing the different deductions and stuff.
We currently got two plans. One is the HMO, which is slightly lower cost, and the other is the PPO, which the majority of our employees are in. More than 88, 5% of our employees are in the PPO plan, which has the higher cost. School board contributes 100% of either plan, whichever plan the employees choose. The HMO has more restrictions for lower premiums. You have to stay in-network, use a provider within the network. The PPO has more options. The 2.5% is only an estimate based on some trends. Some information has just come out that probably that 2.5% is probably going to be eaten up in just the additional fees that providers are going to have to pay to meet the new health insurance law, these things that come in with the state and so forth. There's fees that they'll have to start paying, which raise anywhere from the 2.5% up to 5% of what they currently pay in premiums. So, there's going to be increases one way or the other. The concept is, there's multiple plans out there you can put together. There's only two people that pay under our arrangement, under fully insured. It's either the employer pays, or the employee pays. The insurance company's on the hook for one year. They'll give us multiple plans that they have, that they have recorded with the State Corporation Commission that we can look at. But either the school board pays the increase, or as we've done the last probably four or five years, we've shifted costs to the employees by restructuring the benefits, but we've still paid increased premiums, and we just to keep the level down to what we could afford. This is one option. We'll know by the, hopefully by the end of this month, what the proposal is for the renewal.
Okay, I still don't see where our employees are going to benefit from this.
They're not.
Right. Well, okay, our, you know, you may laugh, but this has been a prime selling point to get folks to come and stay in this district. And if we're staying now, okay, well, one thing, I don't necessarily agree that the quality of our program has gone down. Folks have agreed, in order to be able to help the board, that they're willing to pay a little higher deductibles, they're willing to pay a little bit more for prescriptions, but they still have a good plan. And with this proposal, they would have a lesser plan. It may be fully paid, but the services that they're going to receive will not be what we have, you know, worked hard to try to maintain. And I understand doing things in a different way, but I don't know that this is necessarily the way we do it.
I hope you didn't think that I was laughing, Ms. Franklin, because I'm not. I think that this is very sad, and I think that if you look at healthcare across all industries, education included, that the benefit to the employee has significantly declined. And what I'm saying is that the benefit to our employee has significantly declined already because of the change in what the employee pays for out-of-pocket, and I don't know how to stop that trend. And one way that you can do it, you know, the board can always, in future years, you can come back and you can say, the board contribution is going to be increased from X dollars to whatever dollars. You know, you do have the option to do that if and when the budget were to take a turn for the upward swing. And you know, the other thing that's on the block is to also bring you all a presentation on self-insurance, and we're talking with our provider and hoping to bring you that presentation at one of your February meetings. But that's the kind of thing that takes probably 18 months to get in operation. So, we have potentially two more years to deal with increasing healthcare costs while that consideration is being investigated.
And the question there with the self-insurance, are we looking at discussions with the county in trying to combine our internal?
That's why I'm bringing you the self-insurance presentation, because they have, they are part, the county is part of a consortium, and they are interested, the county is interested in self-insurance, and they have had a presentation in self-insurance, and they have asked if Montgomery County Public Schools would be interesting, interested in being a partner with them in a self-insured plan. It would probably require that both groups do it in order to be able to fund it, because you have, you assume risk in the self-insured plan.
Yeah, you're a good, you're a good year off from doing a self-insured. Most likely could not do it for this upcoming year. It takes a lot of planning to come up with a common benefit plan. You need the board supervisors for under self-insurance, because you have to have revenue capacity and a reserve requirement to go into self-insured, because if you have bad claims, somebody's got to cover them, and you take the risk when you go on your self-insured than on employee insured. So, you have to have the support. Back to Ms. Franklin's question. This is an option for the board. If you look at the proposal, the increase is in there. It's a month, and four million. If you don't have the money, then the choice of the board is to continue doing what you're doing in health insurance, and continue paying the increase, and find money through one of the other options in order to balance the budget, or this is one option to consider when we get to that point. But we pretty much reached the point where we either pay the additional cost, or we have to change the way we're doing health insurance.
I understand all that, but I just wanted to be clear on exactly what we're proposing.
Board members, any additional questions on the budget reductions?
I have no questions. I have a couple of comments I want to make, if I may. I think it's time that, we are leading in our communities. I think we need to lead as a board. We're underfunding our schools, we're underfunding the system, and we're destroying it, and I think it's time that we stopped. This is my sixth year on the board, and every year we've cut, and we're at a point where we're starting to destroy the system, in my opinion. And I will not vote to cut anything from this point on. I will not hurt our children. They can't fend for themselves. They have no voice, they have no vote, although every child I speak to asks, please, can you tell the board, don't cut anymore? Every parent I speak to has said, please, stop cuts. I've spoken to several people who are living marginally, and they ask that we do all we can to educate our children, so that they can have a better life than what they have. And I will support the superintendent's budget the way it is right now, and I think this board needs to lead. We've heard from over 60 parents at our last meeting last fall, and not one parent, including three supervisors, said anything about cuts. They all wanted us to stop cutting, and they wanted us to have a better education system. And I think at this point, where I look at this list of possible budget reduction options, and if we haven't destroyed it yet, if we go through this list, we will, by the time we get to the end of it.
Board members, any additional comments, question? I have one question. The reduced extended-year contracts, that primarily impacts our CTE group, is that correct?
No, it impacts CTE, it impacts other extended-year contracts, it impacts our school nurses who work about nine days during the year when students are not in school. I gave you in your board update, a position-by-position analysis. It was a variety of positions. Mark, you want to add to that?
Guide needs counselors, library media specialists, summer music instrumental programs, and social workers.
So, basically, everybody who works any summertime beyond the regular school year.
But this is also some of the folks that work during the school year, because there's some extended contracts for folks that are in the school year, right?
The nurses would be inside the school year, the remainder of them, I believe, are outside the school year, is that correct, Mark?
So, then it wouldn't impact...
Yes.
So, it wouldn't impact CTE of us outside the school?
Well, remember, the CTE programs, the reason they have the extra days initially was to do some of the program upkeep, equipment upkeep and cleaning, and those kind of things that might not be easily done during the regular school year. But that's done after students leave the building, not when students are still in the building.
I'm just going to make a comment. I know you're just kind of grasping from places and anywhere, but the middle school athletics and to replace them with intramural programs for $28,000, to me, that's a, that's a big sacrifice of $28,000. You know, if we were talking about saving $100,000, I could say, yeah, you know, but $28,000 in this kind of budget to cut all middle school sports, I just think that would be a sad thing to do, and I can't vote for that.
Okay, any additional questions? You know, given to everybody that it is a sad list, and when I look at this list, I believe I count seven of the 10 items on that list impacted personnel, or directly impacted personnel. It may not have an FTE number beside of it, but basically what we're doing is we're talking about eliminating people in certain positions, and it's a serious number. You know, this board is, has responded to the state not funding education. I think this board has stepped up, and over the past years I've been on it, and the county has stepped up and filled that gap, and has demonstrated leadership in doing so. So, when we want to talk about cuts, we want to talk about what the state has done to us, not what the school board has done to the division. I think that with the leadership we've had in previous administrations, and certainly the leadership that has been given, provided to us by Ms. Blackburn and her staff, we have fared well compared to other divisions in the face of cuts. So, all of this is what the state is not doing. I see the federal number at $32,000. That's what they're going to contribute to education, the federal government.
And take away 350, probably.
And take away 350. So, you know, the balance is, the burden is being shifted constantly to the back of the local taxpayer to be able to provide education, and a classic example of that in this budget is the BRS contributions. So, I think that we have, over the course of years, and the administration's done an outstanding job, and stepped up along with the county, and provided the right leadership we can for our students and for our teachers. You had some things you needed from us, I want to make sure we go through that list.
Just have one more. I can't see down there, but I have another question. On the part where you were putting back some money for the supply budget, restoring maintenance positions, I just wondered, looking back on our last year and the cuts that we made, were there some other areas that you thought maybe about putting back on there that we should be concerned about, that were cut last year, that things aren't going so great?
I prioritize the instructional equipment and supplies as the number one need to replace. I mean, obviously, there are other things that I would love to put back, but this was my number one priority. And when I was looking at, you know, three and a half million dollars, I thought it was best to address first priority. I can certainly bring you a list of other things that I would put back.
I was looking back, and it's kind of, you know, goes to Mr. Jones's comments, when I came to this board, I believe the budget was around 68 million, and one of the reasons we have been able to cut and still keep operating is because we, the boards in the past, and the superintendents, and the staff, have tried to do everything they can to build this district, to help it be the best it can be, and, you know, give our children what they need, give our employees what they need. And this freefall that we're in is just unreal. It's just unreal. But as to Mr. Jones's comment, you know, if there hadn't been growth in the district, we would not have what we have been able to cut and still keep going. Could you imagine where we would be if we had not been trying to grow things and improve, and done with bare bones budgets in the past? It would be a sad day today. If today is sad, it's just heartbreaking, as hard as you work, to just have a whole lot doing. I've said that, I think, for the last three years.
So, board members, is there anything that we want to add to the needs-based budget? And I think that was the very first slide, it was a, or delete from the needs-based budget. Are we comfortable with the numbers that the superintendent has presented to us? I think Mr. Roberts has indicated that he is going to support what has been presented to us.
One of the things I'm trying to find a slide that I know we have been cutting in the past, and that has been field trips, and to be able to help expose our children to things beyond Montgomery County. So, if I could slide where you show us how much we've cut there.
You've cut your field trip budget 30%, which is about, you didn't have much in it to start with. It was just under $19,000.
So, I would like to see some money go back into that.
Field trips, travel.
I'd like to, I'd like to have funds, see if we can put funds back there.
Board members, anybody else on addition to relations in needs-based budget?
Let me ask this question, because I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I'll thank you, and also Ms. Franklin. I think that the superintendent has shown great leadership, as have you, and I think as a, as a board, at this point in time, I think we need to step up and even show more My question would be, is there anyone else on this board who is looking at this superintendent's budget as is, and is interested in supporting it, other than myself? budget as is and is interested in supporting it other than myself? We have two hands standing there.
Ms. Foster?
We have a third, a fourth hand up here. We have four people on this board who can support this budget. Ms. Blackburn.
Anyone else, any input comments? I think the proof in the pudding is going to be the tax rate, as you see in the highlighted area, in the 5.1 cent increase in the tax rate. And we'll see, that's where that, where that leads us. Okay, so I don't, only addition I can be hearing is something about field trips. No deletions at this time? Any other additions? Input on priority recommendations, should we need to make cuts? You go to the one slide that talks about the cuts. Talks about the reductions. We've already talked about that in some, some length. I think one of the recommendations from that discussion is we're going to pull out the middle school modeling class schedule, high school modeling class schedule out for a separate agenda item and discuss that at the next board meetings. And you have that, answer your question on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, really, we're down to this one budget reduction. Is there anything there that someone just couldn't live with?
Well, I had to agree with Jamie, the middle school athletics, for $28,000. I don't know that I could go along with that.
I think we need to look at the health, health insurance piece as well. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about that one, and depending what the increase is, I was, I don't know that I can live with that one.
Anybody else have any comments on the reduction?
No, I just hope on my comments, folks know I kind of, I agree with Ms. Foster as far as the healthcare. I think we just kind of pay and call with fear with that.
I guess the only question that I have on this is that on line 10, somewhat of like, appears to be a catch-all line, that you just, you, you run out of options to be able to, and it's going to be a combination of all of the above?
Right.
Okay.
I, I needed to get the 3.5, $5 million and I wasn't quite there.
Okay. Those eight FTEs are going to be somewhere involved. So, we have two items. One is the health insurance that, and the middle school athletics replaced with an intramural program. Anybody else? Any other board members need cuts here? That you just couldn't vote for at this time? Do you have some direction there? Any other possible reductions? Anybody have any ideas? Did anybody have a brainstorm over there?
Something I didn't take, that you would take?
The wheels are turning or we're solid, Mark?
Well, when you've, you know, done that low hanging fruit and stuff that you can reach with a step stool, you know, now we need the 20-foot ladders to get into the top of the trees and it's kind of hard to go there.
Well, hearing none, I believe you have, Ms. Blackburn, you now have your question answered and interaction? Okay. At this time, is there any final discussions or comments on the budget as presented by the superintendent? Hearing none, we'll move to the next agenda item on, we have before us, and that's simply agenda preparation and upcoming school board member, upcoming school board meetings, which is January the 22nd. Can you see the preliminary agenda there before you related to that? And with that, any, any final comment? Need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor signify the standing down. Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you, board members and members of the audience for coming out on a cold rainy evening. Have a sacred holiday.